Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. One, so you take your role.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to welcome you to the Russell County Board of Supervisors, April the 17th, two thousand twenty-four, at six P. M. on a recon beaming meeting in the Russell County Board of Supervisors conference room. I'd like to first start off with the call of order and roll call. Andrew Henslin, Luanne Wallace, Tara Die, David Eaton, Rebecca Die, Nate Kaiser, and Steve Brady.
Here.
Sir, you have a quarrel.
Okay. It's working.
Okay. First item on the agenda is implication. I'm here, so I'll do that. And stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance after the prayer. Dear Lord, we thank you for allowing us to be here today, and we appreciate all the nice weather we've had here in the last few days. Lord, we ask for your guidance and your direction as we make decisions on behalf of the county. Lord, be with us that we do the right thing that benefits all the people of the county. Lord, we ask that you guide us and direct us in our personal lives so that what we do is in accordance with your will for us. We ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ, your son and heir saint. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion. If you've had an opportunity to look at the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve this agenda.
So move.
I have a motion to have a second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, a like sign. Darn it. Okay. We're here for your presentation, Mr. Lester.
Thank you, Chairman. I brought it up to match the screens that here since we're in a different board room as I go through it, so it may take me a little time to move through this because it's quite comprehensive. The, again, welcome to the Russell County Board of Supervisors, Russell County Financial Budget Workshop for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. As part of the county is each year that we do an analysis, we make sure that we review all of our twenty-five core operations and fifty-five departments and programs, along with meeting with the budget committee, which is Mr. Brady and Mr. Eaton, and of course, the commissioner, I mean, the treasurer and myself. We go through each one and look at the years of what had transpired, what we have, what contracts we had done, what operations we have performed. Then we look forward for the future year to see what we're going to be looking at from a financial perspective. Just to start off a little bit history in it, two thousand fifteen, the county's financial history, we were looking at a one point five million dollar deficit. We were running on what they call a three million dollar revenue anticipation note. Now, what anticipation note is means that we were borrowing money to run our operations on, and at the end of fiscal year, they would pay it back. So that means in essence that the county was running on a four point five billion dollar deficit because they were still going at a one point five million dollar deficit and operating on a three million dollar rand note. And the county at the time had an S and P and Moody's bond rating of a double B, which is speculative, which is valuable in face, which is vulnerable, and that faces major ongoing uncertainties. So what that means is when you're trying to borrow, it gets very difficult. It's like having a bad credit rating, but on a county perspective. Over the years since two thousand fifteen, you know, we have consolidated operations, and currently the county has a bond rating of a double A, investment grade, very strong. That means we have a financial ongoing concern and interest rate on the county projects. It's very important because it comes into play, just not into the economic development projects that you see, but also any water sewer projects or any capital projects that we have. And how it measures out currently, what with our double A bond rating, we're running and able to achieve, and with the major funders and lenders, we're running around the two percent mark, which is very good, or two point five. As everyone knows, that throughout the U. S. and the world right now, and the interest rates are by the Federal Reserve, as of this morning, was seven point five. That's the interest rate on a mortgage. Of course, you know, on the ten-year, you're looking at a four point eight. So what that means on a three million dollar loan is, as an example, we're twenty-year period at two percent, which is six hundred forty-two thousand dollars. It goes up to six point five. The interest accrues over a twenty-year loan goes to two point three. That's the difference. That's funding that the county could use that we don't need to be have to pay out what we do in operations and not have to raise taxes. Since two thousand fifteen, the board has reduced the cost through consolidating its operations, through disposal, landfill operation, restructuring contracts, services in-house, and utilizing the community work programs. Of course, during the same time that we've been cutting costs, not raising taxes, we also have, over the eight years, had twenty-six percent in pay increases, two bonuses, which is worth seven percent, for a total of thirty-three percent increases for county employees, and that includes the schools, the constitution officers, and the county employees. Now, last year, we got six hundred thousand dollars in our casino funds that were for public safety and education, and of course, transportation in there, but that's not one of the things that the board considered at the time. The breakdown of the six hundred thousand, of course, one hundred fifty-six thousand eight seventy-five went to fire and rescue, two thirty-three, two oh one went to Virginia Community College, which is a mandatory fee that we pay annually for education that, based off our demographics and our population, that we have to pay the community colleges. All counties have to do this, have this in their footprint. Also, we paid for the race program, and two hundred nine thousand nine twenty-four was in for the court operations and safety operations. That's public safety concept. Of course, what we're looking at this year, and we thought we'd at first during the presentation that we gave for the landfill on the financial issues that we're facing, the county have not changed much. Of course, the Virginia minimum wage, which is mandatory, right now, it was voted down by the governor, but as right as we know, they're still in session right now negotiating these, and now we heard that it is still come back upon the table and being considered as a negotiation. So we still got to keep that in the back of our mind when we plan this, and we'll move forward. But at the time, the impact to the county would have been an eighty-seven thousand dollar impact. That's based off of what our current employees that were at that level. Of course, the southwest regional, southwest Virginia regional jail increase, that was a mandatory due to, even though the cost at the regional jail decreased on a per inmate, on operation and dead load, our numbers of incarcerations had went up. That increased it into around the five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and I'll go into that later. Of course, the Russell County DSS, the foster care and the CSA services increase, which is mandatory, and Miss Die that sits on there, you know, we've had, it's starting to come through on the foster care program and the CSA program on the childrens in need. So that's additional two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Next topic is the inflationary costs. As everybody's seeing, that's cost electricity, front operations, fuel, gas, just the regular keep the doors open. Right now, that's what we're projecting based off all twenty-five services and fifty-five departments is a hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars. To continue on, the Russell County disposal and transfer station increase, which is a contract, as we mentioned before at the landfill meeting, we're looking at right now, and that's four hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, and that's plugged into the budget. The Regional Waste Management Authority, which is the authority that is over the three counties for the regional waste management, which includes Russell, Dixon, and Buchanan. They also have a contract as an authority, and they're right now projecting a three hundred thousand dollar deficit in our share as being one of the three counties would be a hundred thousand dollars. Of course, back to the fire and rescue, which is also either optional or mandatory this year, the increase that we gave them last year was two hundred forty-five thousand dollars. That was across a level given funded between the fire and rescue services. Again, another topic that came up that was very important to the board and school board was the school resource offices for the Lebanon Castlewood Elementary. Now, this was a grant portion. This is not the total portion. Based off the others, it was around a hundred seventy-eight thousand. This is the local share that we have to come up for salary and benefits for those two. Also, the Russell County teacher salary and at-risk fines, that was the short file. This is the short file, one million, one hundred thirty-nine thousand, three oh seven. That is what the school is currently projecting, and that's what they just currently sent us to, that they needed for the fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. Again, as everybody knows or may not know, the real estate reassessment, which is what we're projecting based off the other counties, of course, Dixon Counties went through theirs, Smith County, and Tazewell County has went through theirs, and around the averages between thirty to forty percent, but on majority is forty percent. If you've done improvements to the property, then it could go into the fifty percent range. And of course, this year, we did increase in the casino funds from six hundred thousand up to one point one million, which y'all can actually allocate to public safety and education. So we went from six hundred, we'll go into that later too. Currently, the county has forty-two county-funded full-time positions and thirty-six part-time, and sixteen of the part-time make minimum wage. So that's where we're coming in with this minimum wage increases. Now, as y'all can see, I've got a breakdown of the fifty-five major departments that make up our budget. And then you'll see in a few minutes how each one of them is divided out within the budget. Of course, you've got the general administration, which includes the board supervisors all the way down through the electoral board, commissioner of revenue, assessors, procurement, commissioner of revenue, auditors, county administration, board supervisors. Of course, you also have the public safety, which includes the sheriff's department, litter control, fire department, rescue, state forestry, regional jail, building inspector, nine-one-one, medical examiners, emergency management, and animal control. In our education, we got the Russell County schools and the community colleges, which you had seen before. In the judicial administration, we have the circuit courts, general district, the magistrates, probation, clerks, court security, Commonwealth attorneys, and victim witnesses. In environmental control, we have disposal operations and sites that we have at the, you know, it's one of our sites, and of course, the landfill and the transfer station. We also support the Virginia Department of Health, Department of Social Services, community service boards, and Appalachian Agency of Senior Citizens. The other ones that we make up at the end of these fifty-five, of course, includes parks, community centers, conference center, old courthouse, libraries, the planning commission, the I. D. A., the P. S. A., the Cumberland Plateau Planning District, Cumberland Plateau Housing Authority, highway safety, tourism contributions, soil and water, Virginia Tech Extension Office, and of course, the last things that we have to have by contract, we have to work on and have expenditure on is, of course, Capitol Atlake County Insurances, town taxes, and debt service. That makes up these fifty-five major department listings or programs. Now, this is a breakdown of the full county's fully funded employees. We have, of course, at the landfill and disposal operation, that includes the truck drivers and the transfer station, we have seven. Administration four, researchers office two, treasurer office two, this county. One in a tax coordinator, judge secretary, community work program coordinator, animal control, building inspector two, emergency management one, that's actually one point five, but the other point five is on the ground. Sorry about that. Building maintenance, three, housekeeping, two, tourism, one, conference center, one, library, four, nine-one-one services, which is dispatch, five, and the assessors office, two, for a total of forty-two employees. Now, the part-time breakdown of employees, of course, litter control, we got one, court bales, four, nine-one-one is backup. We got two community work programs that work our community programs out. They are part-time employees. We have two, of course, at disposal sites and landfill operations, those are twenty, those twenty are the ones that rotate between all the communities, the trash sites. They're all part-time. Library has seven, for a total of thirty-six part-time employees. Next, we wanted to make sure, when we developed the budget, the first thing you always start at is how much money you make, just like a budget that you have in the house, how much revenue is coming in, and what are we projecting out for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five? As this is a report by the treasurer's collection rates on schedule reports, of course, this is a five-year analysis from two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-three on real estate, as you can see down here at the bottom, which is kind of hard, this is just the real estate, but it is ninety-nine point oh seven percent is what we collect. That's amazing. That's close. I mean, that's... Next, on the treasurer collection rates is, of course, the personal property, and you'll look at it on the personal property, we run at ninety-four point six, but what you need to do is look at here through these numbers, because our numbers tell us the story of what's occurring in the county. And as you can see, from two thousand nineteen through twenty, as you come down through the columns, because you've got to remember, there's merchants' capital in here, mobile homes, machine and tool, and personal property. You will see the mobile homes depreciate. We'll start, especially when you take a look at personal property in two thousand twenty-three, it goes from just the personal property at ninety-nine oh five, merchants' capital at seventy-seven oh four forty-six, mobile homes at seventy-six, and the machine and tool, of course, came in at seventy-seven. So these things are depreciating. One of the things, the good things about the mobile homes are depreciating because they depreciate. They're not like a house that goes up in value during the assessment. It's titled, just like a car, and it will go down in depreciation based off of age. Now, on the machine and tool, we did have a couple companies that moved, that shut down, especially North of Grumman and, you know, the Polycap, but now, since that, we've been working on it. We've got other replacements in their businesses going in. That revenue will pick back up, but it will take time at the second half of twenty-four or twenty-five fiscal year to be able to see it. Next, on the treasurer's collection rates, this is on the mineral tax. Of course, it's at ninety-nine point four six. And the next one, well, that was the last one, on the public service, thank you. At the public service tax, this is what we collect on the public services at a hundred percent. We collect a hundred. Now, how's this come to play into the budget? First of all, before I wanted to go into this, this is, of course, what the Virginia Department of Education had sent us recently, and it was unexpected, even before the landfill presentation, and has occurred since. When, over the last three to four years in rural counties across Virginia, the General Assembly had supplemented the rural counties for, that were having problems, especially not just during the pandemic, but because of the low drop in population, the General Assembly was taking some of their General Assembly funds that they had surplus on, and they were giving them to school divisions and districts through southwest Virginia, central Virginia, around Emporia, southern. That way, they could help, you know, counties that were small and rural areas to be able to supplement these services. Now, the General Assembly decided this year on the at-risk, which is the funds that come through the lottery program, as you're going to see. This one right here is a snapshot of January the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, that began at the front of the year. And as you can see, as we come down through it, in these, I have circled on SOQ accounts, which is the teachers' account, you have six point nine, oh, six million, nine hundred five thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars, and that is the local share. This is what the state has here, and then you have on the far right, the far column is what the local share is. Now, as you go through, at the time, what they were calling the skinny budget, or the new biennium, as you can see during this red, they had no compensation amount that was not funded in twenty-five. Well, see, that has since changed. And of course, the at-risk was four hundred and one thousand dollars, seven hundred and ninety, for a total of these two numbers that were six point nine and eight hundred five thousand. As we transition through into, from January the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, a total of eight point six, five eight, this is what we have gotten into as of March the ninth, as of the budget. As you can see, these numbers have went to six point three, up to a million dollars, up to one point six million dollars. Now, remember, it was eight hundred thousand before, so this is an increase of eight hundred thousand dollars just in the schools at-risk programs. This one right here, that was being supplemented by the General Assembly. This is the local share. So on a total, the county went obligation for F. Y. twenty-five for the local share for the school districts on, was eight million, nine hundred forty-four thousand, one seventy-two. That came, just came out of the General Assembly. Now, that's our local share that we've got to. How does that translate into the budgets? So, of course, this is the school budgets and the breakdown of the revenue, and of course, this is the number of ten million, four thirty-three, four seventy-three, as everyone knows in the room, that the school has proposed closing down two schools, which is the Swords Creek Elementary and the Copper Creek Elementary. And since then, as of last week, Thursday, this is the new figures that are still, this is the new figures considering the closure of these two schools. So back through the net total between their revenue base, their federal and state funding, and their local share and their grants, and their subsidies, we're looking at a deficit about one point one million, three hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred fifty-three that the board supervisors will have to come up with. One million, one thirty-nine, five fifty-three. Now, currently, how this translates into the teacher salaries, of course, this is F. Y. twenty-three, twenty-four, our Russell County school teacher salary based on years' experience started at a base rate of thirty-six thousand. As you can see, when it trends, as it, as the grain through tenure up to the thirty-year mark, it goes up to the fifty-eight, one oh eight. And of course, this is the new scale salary. At zero years, it goes to forty-two base. So it goes from thirty-six to forty-two on base, and it caps out at the thirty-year mark at sixty-three, five. Now, next on it is the regional jail that we had talked about before. As you can see, in the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, as compared to F. Y. twenty-four, actually, our cost on the Russell County, even though our inmate count went up to one twenty, it went down fourteen thousand dollars. Of course, Russell County on the debt service, even though we're at one twenty, we had an increase from the previous years of ten, which went down two. As you can see, from fiscal year ending, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, the rate was forty-three, sixty-one, and now it is thirty-nine, fifty-three. So it was a reduction in rates, and as you can see on the debt load, it went from nine twenty-seven down to eight fifty-seven. Now, last year, as you can see, for the total impact to the county was twenty-seven thousand, oh eighty-four, sixty-five, for the, what was owed. Now, here is a list that has been put into the budget for the board's consideration. This is, again, only a proposal from each department. As you can see, from the Appalachian senior citizens through the Gateway Horse, Appalachian Juvenile, Clinch Rivers, Commonwealth Attorney, all the way through for the board's consideration and review. Yeah, this is my presentation, and please don't interrupt. This is not a comment period. Next is the budget. Of course, as we start off before, this is the revenue, as that we're looking at it, as again, as your king and queen of taxation, as you can see, that from the real estate, the mineral tax, and the personal property, all the way down through the penalty and interest, there was an increase of one point eight percent. That was it. So as we grab the other local taxes, which includes the sales tax, coal severance tax, food and meal, down through the treasures and the cigarette decals, it was a total, it went from four million, fifty-two thousand, four million, two thirty-two, for an increase of four point four percent. Now, what we gain from here, this is what we call the comprehensive local funds for the major taxation base. What that means is of those twenty, fifty-five departments, twenty-five core services, that's where we have to run that majority from that twenty-two million dollars. That's where the county's, because if you look down below, as you keep going through, permits, privileges, and fees, this is based off of services. This is not guaranteed. It fluctuates year to year. Of course, the fines and forfeitures and revenue from the use of funds and properties also flux year to year based off of utilization. Of course, charges for services, again, it's for services for jail and inmate fees, which we're only looking at for a total of two hundred fifty-five thousand of, you know, of twenty-two million dollars. So it's very limited, and it's based off utilization. And that goes through the courthouse security fees, blood tests, courthouse construction, Commonwealth attorney fees, community work program, and any house maintenance fees that we have. And of course, the disposal fees, which is the transfer station, which is a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. Now, the next category of major revenue, which is not a major revenue, it's a total of four hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred fifty, is, of course, the library fees, fines, health, you know, sales of real estate, race program refunds, sale of vehicles, it's just miscellaneous programs that we have that we, that fluctuate year to year. And it's hard to make the budget off of these numbers here. Some of them are estimable, but they're not mature. And of course, when we get into what we call recovered costs, of course, that's a cost that's recovered from either the DSS, the I. D. A., the health department, as again, that fluctuates. Most of what we get back from recovered costs on the DSS, which is two hundred and eighty thousand, one fifty, that's a pass-through account for their benefit services. We process the DSS's payroll, so it's just a pass-through. We pay it, we get it reimbursed. It's just a pass-through through the DSS. It's not actually something that we get to utilize and collect, it's their funds. So as I said before, you know, the total local revenue actually went down from twenty-three million, oh oh five, and you go, you know, if you look on the next page, down at the below the recovery cost, and you go, okay, we collected more, it went from twenty-three, five hundred, five hundred thousand, two oh seven, down to twenty-two million, eight seventy-five, seven ninety-six, which is a decrease of six tenths of a percent. If you look at what I have highlighted here, and this is the reason. Last year, we had a refund of five hundred and eighty thousand, one sixty-three, because we ran so efficiently at the regional jail. That was money that came back to us in reversion funds. That was counted in. Now, this year, we get zero back, and we actually increased by twenty-seven thousand dollars. So that's a five hundred and eighty thousand dollar movement that we did not have last year. Next on the county, on the revenue, revenue from the Commonwealth, of course, that's a stable one. A commissioner revenue, as we collect these fees, DMV stops, rolling taxes. And of course, the personal property, that's the biggest one that we've got in the tax relief funds. And that's a set amount that never fluctuates. It's a set amount based off of what we collect off of personal property. And it's been supplemented by the state for vehicles. As y'all can see, again, we are into another highlighted item. As the District Regional Improvement Commission, which is the casino funds, which went from the six eighty up to the one point one million, which was an increase of sixty-one percent. But the bottom line, as you can see, only went up fourteen percent. The next is the shared ones. This comes from the state of Virginia and allocated to the constitution officers. This is money that can't be expended anywhere else other than reimbursement for their services through the Commonwealth Attorney, the sheriff, the commissioner of revenue, the treasurer's office, the treasurer's office, elector board and the clerk of the circuit court. That is restricted funds. Again, the other category aid that we get is of course, through grants. This is the portion that we get if we're lucky, that's either templated or as you can see, that we get through the state library aid, which pays for a hundred and thirteen thousand, three sixty-seven for the library. That comes through the state. Uh, we get EMS grants, domestic violence grants, and these are also restricted. For a total of five hundred and thirty-four thousand, three forty. As you can see, it has went down four point five percent. Now, the total category aid is three million, nine sixty-six, five seventy-two. For the total Commonwealth revenue of seven million, four hundred and twelve, for a total general fund revenue projection of thirty million, two eighty-eight, oh twenty-one, which is a one point seven percent increase in revenue, even though we collected the one point one million from the casino. We lost five hundred and eighty thousand at the regional jail. As fast as we get a supplement back in to replace one of, another expenditure came in that took those excess revenues. So right now, what the county is projecting with the schools, the raises, the disposal, the increase in those items that I had discussed before, as far as disposal and, and the regional jail and the schools and the SROs, we're looking at a projected deficit of six hundred and forty-six thousand, five seventy-three. Now, I'm going to, as we develop the budget on the special revenue, of course, this is special revenue funds for coal taxes that are restricted. Projects like the Danes Sewer Revenue from the comp boards and of course, the asset program, which is a fine grant. For a total of thirty-seven million, eight hundred and ten thousand, four eighty-one, which is one point one four percent increase over last year. That is the total revenue, including all federal and state and local and grants. Now, down to the budget expenditures, since we didn't, only had one point four percent increase and that included everything, including the feds, restricted funding, constitution officers, grants, locals fees, the, the total comprehensive income package. Way that the budget committee did, we had to go line item by line item through each and everything that we did. Now, one thing they did include in here, we, we cut where we could because the insurance is going up, electricity is going up. We, we looked at the baselines of what historically we had spent and, but we did include a three percent pay raise for county employees to be able to match what was given through the state to the comp boards and the school boards. For those forty-two employees that y'all seen before, those twenty, that's, we've included this in our budget. So as you go through it, of course, first one going to start off is of course, the board supervisor's budget. Well, we had to cut you fourteen percent, sorry. I mean, I'd had to drop you down thirteen point three percent. So that. Now, as I move through these fifty-five different departments that we referred to before, as you can see, the only changes you will see either an increase in the payroll for the county employees or you'll see an increase in expenditures for operations, utilities or cost or contracts or mandatory by the state dependent upon the program. It's for example, the county administrators, we had an increase of two point four overall. As you go through each and one of them, and we'll go through, as again, auditors, they, that went up twenty-eight percent. Expenses in services and contracts. As you went through the commissioner of revenue, three percent, three point five. Uh, real estate, three point one, which includes the salaries. Of course, the treasurer's office, that is three point five. But the point is that I'm going to get to, and I'm going to move down to the line items that incurred the major cost. So the procurement processing, the elector board increased by ninety-six point six percent. But oh my gosh, we had that increase. Now, the reason for that is you got a general election fund that's paid by the state of Virginia for the presidential election of professional services. And postal services. Next is of course, the general registers on itself. The department itself only went up two point five percent. The circuit court, of course, it went at five point nine percent, which is covered by the state of Virginia, one hundred percent composition positions. General district, six tenths of one percent. Special magistrate, zero. Probation services, zero. Clerk's office, three point nine. Again, that was due to changes in the program and the healthcare programs that was chosen and the increase in professional audit services that had to be done during the changeover for the clerk's office, mandatory policy. Commonwealth attorney, three percent, raise mandatory compensation board. So is the clerk's office. Victim witness grant, two point nine percent. Sheriff's Department compensation, that's constitution by the state, five point nine percent. Labor control, zero, eight percent increase. Volunteer fire departments, zero percent increase. Rescue, zero percent increase. Forestry division, now where you go, we have a forest division. I gotta explain this because I have a few board members. We're required to subsidize the Department of Forestry in case we have a forest fire. This is a state mandatory requirement based off the demographics and the square miles. We have four hundred and seventy-seven square miles in the county. And that is what the Department of Forester charges us on the annual amount if they have a fire or if they don't have a fire. It doesn't matter, you still pay it. Regional jail, as you can see, like I said, even though it went down sixty, zero point six tenths of a percent, that twenty-seven thousand I was referring to, or thirteen thousand really what it is after the debt load, we lost five hundred and eighty thousand last year. So essentially, we were, we went down five hundred and eighty thousand dollars because we went up in inmates and went down in costs. Luckily, we did not go up in a daily cost or a debt load cost per day. The building inspector, four point three, that was a change in healthcare program, as you can see. The nine-one-one services actually went down one point two percent based off operations because we moved the, from the old nine-one-one building that was out of coming plateau planning district to the new nine-one-one building. So we're starting to see some of the efficiencies of cost savings coming through there because it's so comprehensive, less heat, the run in a dual building. So it's coming down a little bit too. And we hope we'll see more. Medical examiner, mandatory, I hope we don't have to use it. Uh, emergency management, two point one percent. Again, you'll see it just a change in the salary base. The solid waste landfill and transfer station. Now, this is where it gets good. As you can see during June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, two years ago, our, our landfill cost was nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Now it's a million sixty. That's just in there. Now, here's the ones I got circled at the transfer station operations. It went from one million, one ninety-seven, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand in twenty twenty-three to one point five nine nine five sixty. There's a five point two percent just over last year, but a total increase of four hundred thousand from twenty-three to twenty-five. Of course, animal control, three percent, overall, zero point nine percent. General properties, five point one percent. And that is due to the increased cost of the reassessment. Health department, level funding, zero percent increase, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-five. Cumberland Mountain Community Service Board, they asked for two hundred and twenty-five thousand, we were able to contribute forty thousand. What I did was, based off the restrictions of the budget, I'm asking for slot waivers and for those uh, citizens that will receive services, just like the Department of Social Services, I'm going to ask for slot services waivers into the Department of, of the community service boards. We do this on an annual basis. Next, Department of Social Services, Ms. Tara, she knows what I'm going to say. I'm looking at an increase of eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, three oh six, up to one point one million dollars, a twenty-four point seven percent increase. Now, that includes both the CSA and the foster care program and the foster care positions that had to be put in place. And luckily, this is worth, this will be worth every dollar because all of our foster kids that we've got at the time, Tara will tell you, we had one foster home. Now we're up to twenty. Now hopefully, this will keep moving with, we have sixty-some kids, I think sixty-three, is it, is it sixty-two, sixty-three right now? It may have. Okay, so I knew there were some that was coming through, so we're moving them in and they're coming in as fast as we can, you know, get find homes.
Yes.
Question, question.
Yes, sir. The budgeted number for this year, twenty-four, is that, are we going to overrun the budget?
This, that is correct. We, we are right.
And that's what you've accounted for in the earlier numbers.
That is correct. So of course, we've got to get that fixed for the, the kids, both in the DSS and the foster care and the CSA program. Again, the Appalachian Agency for Senior Citizens, level funding, zero percent increase, eighty-five thousand, nine seventy-five. The school board contributions. Now, as again, as you've seen in the previous slides, in, on FY twenty-three, twenty-four, we appropriated, as you can see, over the last seven years, it doesn't even show it, this will be the eighth year. Over the last seven years, you've actually appropriated nine million, one oh one, three seventeen for the last seven years. Now, with the increase based off the at-risk program and the increase in the salaries for the teachers, you're looking at ten million, fifty-six thousand, eight ninety-three, an increase of ten point five percent. Again, you're back at to the Southwest contribution, which includes the race program and the mandatory mandated state program appropriation of ninety-one thousand, nine forty-one, which is the race program is a hundred and forty-one, two fifty-two for a total of two thirty-eight, three forty, which is only an increase of one tenth of one percent that manages the program. Recreation parks, zero percent increase, they're still all there at the same level funding. Conference center, two point one, that was the increase of the one employee that runs it. For a total of sixty thousand dollars, two thirty-four. The culture courthouse is the old courthouse, of course, on Route fifty-eight, a total of sixteen thousand, forty-seven dollars for an increase of two point one, which is the help maintain. Library, two point one increase, and that is into the salaries that are subsidized by the state of Virginia. That hundred and thirteen thousand that you've seen that comes through is partially subsidized, subsidized by the state of Virginia. Planting commission, Mr. Hensley, he cut the number of the members, so that dropped from seventeen thousand to thirteen thousand. As a twenty-three point five percent decrease. Industrial Development Authority, level funding, seventy-five million. PSA, this is a contract for the Danes Sewer Treatment Plant. That's, that's a set amount every year, one thirty, zero percent increase. Cumberland Plateau Planning District, mandatory, thirty-five thousand. Cumberland Plateau Regional Housing Authority, eighteen hundred, mandatory. Highway Safety Commission was forty-six fifty, now zero, hundred percent reduction. Mr. Henson. Contributions, Lord, yeah, we get questioned about how much we give away, but it's only twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars that the county contributes to nonprofits. Tourism, two point three percent increase, one tourism. Clinch Valley Soil and Water, ten thousand five, our share. The extinction office, which is the office that sells, works with the agriculture and sells all the cattle in the county, in the county. Our shares is, was a two point eight percent increase for eighty-five thousand, three thirty-six, mandatory. That's subsidized by Virginia Tech. Non-departmental, of course, this is where we get into the insurance programs. You can see the, by Line of Duty Act, it stayed at, at the same premium. Workman's comp did drop because our risk assessment went down and went from one eighty-five to one fifty-eight, fourteen point three percent in decrease. And of course, the, uh, for a total of two forty-nine, five eighty-three, for a total of minus nine point six percent. Capital outlay transfers, now this is where we got into the real cut, you know. As we went through these fifty-five departments, we kept pushing the numbers down. As you can see, we went from building maintenance that takes care of all the maintenance throughout all the buildings in the county in case something happens, a roof leaks or if an HVC unit goes out. I went from a hundred and five down to twenty-five, it was a seventy-six point two percent decrease. I also took down the, uh, the landfill projects, we went from forty-one, nine, down to twenty-five. And that's a mandatory that's already in place on the contract, or I would have took that down, but I did take it down forty point three percent. Also, we also had a lower bed lake project that was a grant that we also reduced it by twenty-five, that was a hundred percent cut. So overall, just in the capital outlay projects, we reduced it by eighty-five point four percent. Now, the next line item that's on here is a pass-through that we are mandatory required by code based off the population demographics to each one of the towns. This is set by the state of Virginia and it comes through the treasurer. This is, these, these numbers are mandatory and dictated by the state, this department of tax. I just hope you can still hear. So as we pass through the town of Lebanon, town of Holacre, the town of Cleveland and the town of St. Paul. As you can see, overall, through this one line item, we had a sixty-two point one percent reduction. Our debt service is still maintained at the same, no increase of the debt over the year. No, from the IDA projects or the PSA projects, which is, you know, managed on by previous boards. I don't even know how many years ago, thirty, thirty-five. Oh, water projects that the board of, board of supervisors is obligated to pick up from the old, old, old PSAs. Yes, ma'am. You go ahead. Yes, ma'am. The, the other capital projects. The, the other capital projects.
Oh, and I'm, like I said, I may have missed it because I was right.
Oh, it's fine. All right. Is this the screen that you're talking about, Tara?
Uh, capital outlay and fund transfers, yeah.
Yes. Okay. On this one, as you can see, under Code seventy five fifty six, which is, is for building maintenance, that is to help maintain for HVC units replaced, roof leaks or equipment that we replaced, I had a hundred and five thousand, we reduced it to twenty five, which is a seventy six point two percent. Seventy six.
Eighty twenty seven is what I was looking at.
Eighty twenty seven.
Other capital projects.
Other capital projects.
Oh, other capital projects.
What are those?
Yeah.
Okay, you know, this second, other capital projects that went from one ten down to, uh, a hundred percent. Okay. Now on that one, ours are reduced, did a hundred percent to down to zero. Now those are projects like at the ballparks that we run through other capital projects throughout the year that has been approved by the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Now remember that is a budget amount that I still have in there. That one ten is still, that's not a true number. I can give you the true number of what has been expended. See, that's, that's what was budgeted. See, I'm running between twenty four, twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah. See, the previous years was sixty three, you know. At the time, too, as you can look on the annual experience in twenty one, twenty two, some of the, we would run, we would be responsible for school projects because contracts ran through us or other capital projects, but we are very diligent about whatever projects that we have, we divide it out. As you can see, you'll see like the, uh, the campgrounds or the courthouse project, we get very defined, but we have to by our rules to make sure that if those other capital projects, we still have to define that within that little, uh, code. You're welcome, ma'am. Again, back down to the Dainte Sewer, Russell County IDA, which is this building, and of course, the PSA, which is debt that y'all vote. And from the old PSA that was reconsolidated, that has a moral obligation from y'all for a total of thirty million, nine thirty four, five ninety four, which is a three point nine percent increase. But with the requirements from the landfill, the, uh, at the beginning, as you can see. With these budget issues here that we just went through at the beginning of the presentation. The minimum wage, regional jail, loss of five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, the increase in the foster care and the CSA increases. The operation, uh, this county operation inflation cost between the electricity and the fuel cost. Disposal and transfer station increases, four hundred and sixty five thousand, regional authority, that's a hundred thousand. Fire and rescue, of course, again, it's a, that's a two hundred and forty five thousand dollar obligation. Our local share, even though we have an SRO grant, is still seventy seven, nine seventy three. The Russell County teacher salary and at-risk reductions in funds, which was the one point one three nine, three oh seven that we referred to before. Of course, again, the increase in the revenue, which was the casino funds, which is one point one million. And now that is the first introduction to the Russell County budget. We're not close to being done yet, even though we've looked at these numbers and we've looked at the school board numbers, we've looked at the PSA numbers, we've, we've looked at number after number of the commissioner revenues and the treasurers and county administrators, the budgets, the IDAs and everyone that we could get over and over to see what we could, you know, cut, cost, eliminate, or increase. Now I will tell you, and I was hoping that the treasurer could be able to do, but she had to go to church. She will tell you, and Stephen David knows, right now, at these levels, I've done this thirty years, I've never had to go to the level of revenue projection that I've had to before on this. Now what does that mean? As you've seen in those first projections of ninety nine point oh seven percent of real estate collection. As you've seen on, on the collection on perfect, public safety, personal property, machining tool. If you'll take those numbers that we have projecting and what we're putting into the budget, I'm projecting at a hundred, sometimes at a hundred and five percent to be able to get to that level on projections of revenue. Any questions?
One thing, uh, lots of, uh, some of the other thing that we actually took on is the leases that we had on some of the properties. And we utilized our own properties and moved the sheriff's office to the PSF, to the, uh, new Department of Social Services here at the center. So I don't know what those cost savings were at the time, but a lot of times the general public, I understand, I think you're, I know there's a lot of people here, I'm sure a lot of people watching, uh, what the, what's the consequences of is, if, you know, as far as the county as a whole, I want to go back to those days when I first got elected and was operating on the random and I do appreciate everybody that participated with schools, youth revenue, treasurer, sheriff's office, everybody came to the table and was able to help the county develop a plan to, to get us to this level. And we didn't create inflation. So we didn't create the issue for today. These are things that have tripped down. Now it's not only impacting us, it's impacted all the counties in the area of region, not just us. So we've had many conversations with other county leaders that are facing the same.
Worse.
So, you know, we, we've took on a lot of that, but when, when it's our time to kind of interrogate, I guess, as far as some ideal thinking, uh, I don't know, right now is a good time. One of the things that I've talked about numerous times is a, an abandonment, abandonment of building tags and industrial sites. Uh, one of the things I heard when I first got elected, uh, was you got all these empty buildings. We worked tirelessly trying to fill up the empties before we would even allow anybody to build new. Uh, we had some pretty good success back then before COVID hit and all that stuff that we were dealt, but, uh, I'd ask you and I'd ask different ones, and I know me and Steve talked about it numerous times in the budget, about, uh, you know, these people that leave these buildings late and sit here and they just use it for nothing. And I don't think that's right. I think they're either going to have to get off the pot and do something or sell them or do something with them because over the periods of years that they just not created jobs, they're only paying us a minimal real estate tax. We don't get any machining tool. Uh, I think we already give them a year. And then after the year, that their, each year their taxes go up until they get off the pot. And then they either sell it or they move somebody in it. Uh, that wouldn't penalize the working people, the taxpayers, but that would put some beef behind our, uh, the things that we want to see. I mean, part is we get, usually get grants from either the seed or the traffic mission to acquire the properties. Is it my not correct on that? In the industrial site. So when we give up our incentives to attract the business, then they came, they come in and win incentive package. It's gone. A lot of times they look for other areas to get another incentive back, you know, I like that, uh, that process, but that's, that's another day, but I do think that the buildings that we have had empty like rooms will, some of these buildings, and I know, I don't know, like before it got out, after I started talking about it, but I noticed they had TCI, had it on market now selling.
Yeah.
Uh, we tried everywhere in the world, having meeting after meeting, talking to the ownership about, uh, doing something with it. And, uh, we had, she obviously worked with, uh, the country for it, but she, she made us on consistent basis to have conversations with these people. But it don't do us any good, we're not making anything on these buildings, uh, if we don't do something.
You're, you're talking about a special assessment tax.
I'm talking about a special assessment.
For abandoned, for idle buildings.
Yes.
For just idle.
That, that would be a good proposal. Yes, sir.
Do you remember what kind of tax impact that was with rentals closed?
The, uh, does that include the real estate and the machining tool? Were you including the real estate and the machining tool? Okay, from real estate, machining tool and personal property, because we know we had to close out that last through the commissioner revenue. You're, you're, we lost almost six hundred thousand a year.
Okay, Northern Drummond, you know what we lost there?
Yes, we do. It was eight hundred thousand a year.
We need some way to, it's just kind of like an incentive for them to move the property, you know. I know that a lot of people are wicked at these properties now, but
Yes.
we need some incentive to kind of move them along.
I don't think it's right for, if you come in here and then that is belly up and leave for, uh, store work waiting. We don't get any machinery, don't get anything from them. We've asked them to sell it. Now I think they've come with the price, uh, for a median industry that needs purchasing, thank God for that. But I'm not, I'm talking going forward. Now I think it needs to be an understanding that if you come and you take our money. And we, you gotta have a little skin in there. I mean, if you're gonna come and set up shop and send a package roots out, you shut her down and leave and never think another thing about it. I know down in Lewis District, I don't know how long Lewis that built lady, thank God we finally got some in it, but, uh, that building was laid into for years.
It is.
Bush building and, uh, it's not right to, for us to keep up those buildings and have to keep maintaining them on grass and spending all the money expenses on that. If these people are not gonna, um, do something, who? And I know with Northern Drummond situation, that was a, I, that took me away, we're not afraid that we're gonna lose the lawsuit on that where they were just trying to identify other projects, uh, getting into containment. And that would have impacted this whole region more. And, uh, and then we've been fighting to save the power plant down in Carbo, which looks it, it's eight hundred thousand dollars. A year of losing that, I think we can finally get an execution on that, so.
We did.
Uh, I think that these buildings that lay in these industrial sites, and I, I'm just saying for consideration, I'm not saying, I mean, I'll change everybody to think, uh, see if that's an option. Now that these people that leave immediately have to pay each year higher sales value taxes cost, they'll try to sell it. They don't pay as good real estate on the tax and sales value, but then they're trying to sell it for ten times more, uh, than what it's, uh.
Accessible.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
But I mean, that's just an idea, I just want to throw it out there.
Yeah. Well, one, one of the things I want to point out, and it's not all financial gloom and doom, with what y'all have done over the years to consolidate operations and what y'all have done from an economic development, and I'll bring you up to date. If you take a look at what we're showing here on the screen, you know, between the regional jail, the inflationary cost, CSA program, the teachers and the rest, I, that's not internal, it's not our, you know, it's not that we're incorrectly, you know, spending our budget because we, we have level funded, you don't know, for the last seven years even, through the major budgets other than trying to keep the employees that we've got to be able to keep those skill sets. But one of the things that I had a meeting today, now, what, the first one of the part of the meeting was the AT&amp;T building, which met, we met with the IDA, we're within a hundred thousand dollars of selling that between that and the negotiator. So we've got good news on the horizon. You've got Tate, that it is, it is an S and P five hundred company that actually their contractors is Meta and EWS, which is, uh, Amazon. We walked it today. It's amazing. It is absolutely amazing. I would love for the board to take a walk on the road. Of course, you know, the Polycap, we had the problem during the pandemic, that was a company that we did, we got that fixed. And it's, there's another company that comes in, which is an international five hundred company also. Between the Jim Kim, the Samuels, the ATT bill going in at Tate, and the rest that you got going in with CGI, over the next twenty four months, if we can hold on and move and keep controlling and be conservative and move this thing through, your tax base will go up. We're within, we're within a hundred thousand.
We're having it projected in the future.
Yes.
We've got to get, you know, with.
Got to get through today. I don't want to say all gloom and doom because the county's not failing because I, I hear, I hear all the rumors out there, it's a bunch of nonsense. I can, like I said, I can take you down there to that, that company that we got, they ju, they just put in eighteen million dollars worth of machinery. It has the, the longest, the biggest paint line in the world, in the world. That was no joke. The most automated paint line in the world.
Well, I'd also.
It's amazing.
I'd also, I can speak to the whole, that was finalized, but I'm not, that Andrew, it's what we're, uh, working with, you know, on a potential project in my district on, uh, a building that sixty jobs, uh, working through, in my law and funding agency to do that, so I think we got great future. I don't think it is all, we, we faced these situations before, but like I said, we didn't create the inflation. The trickle down effect of that is what's like, it's like not just the county, but it's like the citizens too.
And you know, next Wednesday, you and I got a meeting on off the ground?
Yeah. Well, I, I sat down and looked at potential projects over the next three or four years with this budget. And the jobs to be created, that could be created with these particular projects. And I came up with a total of about nine hundred new jobs over the next three years, if all these projects should go through. Which, again, points back to housing prices, but this one million, one hundred and thirty nine thousand, five hundred and fifty three dollars in additional money at school.
Yes.
That's our, that's differential between last year and this year.
That is, that one million, six hundred and approximately thirty six thousand is the at-risk that we lost, paced off the subsidy through the state. And that's why I put it in.
That, that is moving the salaries up to, or projected new salary scale, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is. That one million, three hundred and thirty nine thousand, three oh seven will put all the teachers in, in, in market competition with every other county that you see on that base.
If you want to be able to live here or work here, life is better.
Well, yeah, we've been trying to do it.
We've been trying to do it for a few.
But the problem with it, when you commit that money, you commit it not just for this year, you commit it every year and thereafter.
And you also got to include the increases in the BRS.
So you better be sure that you've got that money coming in.
And you also got to include what increases with that comes along with the clues. When you include the salaries, you also include their, their, the retirement. So it comes with a very comprehensive package, so, uh, but you're right on the fringe, you've got to get, you've got to get through these next twenty four months. I mean, I mean, like I said, I just walked the facility to just put eighteen million dollars worth of machining tool. We're getting ready to put another one in up here. That is not even count pure salmon. I ain't even, I ain't even locked onto that one yet.
I'm counting.
That's got an eighty million dollar investment, it's in eighty million to date.
Yeah, but that's, that's probably a couple of years.
Yes, that is a couple of years away. Now we knew it was on and off, on and off, and Lord, everyone else, you know, we'd, we'd sweat and then we'd worry and then we'd talk about it and then we thought it was gone, then it comes back, it keeps reviving itself. But apparently they, through the governor on the last December, they've locked in four hundred and two million dollars from the Small Business Financing Authority and they have the bonds to proceed on.
One of the things I've asked Lonzo to send a letter to Delta Moorefield, uh, while we were in that meeting up there the other day, uh, Pure Salmon had made a contribution, has accounted two hundred thousand dollars to run the race. So I asked to, uh, send a letter to them to see if they would also give Russell County two hundred thousand dollars.
We are the host county. We are the host county.
Don't hurt the ass, but, uh, if we got that two hundred thousand, that would be something, say, two hundred thousand back to the bank.
Well.
I, I really think we're going to have to talk to school about phasing this, with these races out. I don't think we can get to it in one fell swoop.
Well, right now you're projecting a six hundred thousand dollar deficit, and I, I, we have, we went line on by line, and you know that.
We've asked them to do that over a few of the times, phase our.
Well.
Allocation, I, I mean, our allocation in, and I think with some of the things that we're taking on, uh, some pretty big. Allocation, I, I mean, our allocation in, and I think with some of the things that they're taking on, uh, some pretty big challenges, uh, to do what they need to do to get us competitive, I, I think they would probably agree to work with us and phasing it in.
I think we just need to sit down and look at it and put a plan together to do. Yes, ma'am. Sure?
Yes, ma'am. Can. Yeah, that number does include closing the schools. It does include, it does, because both myself and the chairman had that conversation one-on-one with the school. That's it.
They haven't voted on it, have they?
No, they have not, sir. They have not. So this number can change. This includes the projection of closing two schools.
It does include.
It does include closing, does include closing both Swords Creek and Copper Creek.
If that should fall through.
Then those numbers will increase.
Those numbers might go up substantially.
Yes. It'd probably be in the, yeah, it was, it was a two point one million before, two closures. It would have been, yes. Any more questions? Donations?
Any, any, any board members have any questions, comments?
But again, I want to, I want to just talk about AT&amp;T just one more time. Uh, I will be coming for the board, next board meeting with an agreement on AT&amp;T. That's how close it is.
If you could check on this special assessment and see what that would do, just to give us the kind of projected numbers on what that would actually do on any foregoing properties that when we were in negotiation, at least the industry would know, that they've got a year to move it or get rid of it or sell it or something.
So based off the code of Virginia and the taxation on idle buildings, now that will only apply to commercial, manufacturing, and industrial. It will not include retail or any, any small business, only, only commercial and industrial manufacturing. Okay.
You know, the ones that, I guess what I'm trying to say is the ones that come in here and ask for the incentive, the tax reduction to get the jobs. I just think, you know, that, uh, help us to keep them on track. That way, if one shuts down, they won't leave an empty page. You know, they would have a time period there unless they knew they wouldn't have to pay higher, higher assessments on, on taxes.
You know, and.
I just want to, I just want to see it. I mean, I'm not saying that.
You've got to remember those ones that is right now that are asking those, that are trying to sell them for those kind of numbers. We're going to catch them during that reassessment, I tell you. We're going to catch them. Yes, ma'am, you got it. Uh, we do, and I'll give you the prime example of the, the Tate corporation that we just, we did. We, since the North of Drummond issue, and I'm going through that legal, you know, episode for, you know, case for, what, two years? While we learned through these performance of what they call clawback measures, we, like North of Drummond, they had a five-year clawback in it and then they could walk away. Where we're, Tate, we've got ten years. We're expanding those, those performance agreements out. You get a company that is an S and P five company in here and they've running two hundred, two hundred and fifty employees that have settled in here for ten years. You just can't pick up and pack your bags and walk out the door anymore. We're extending the front-end reductions on the front end for performance and, uh, agreements on the front end and, and making it better on the long tenure. But, and we've also reduced those amounts. There's no great amount of deals anymore. And of course, Tate was a, was a rarity. It walked in and so I made a period of AT&amp;T, they're buying the building straight out. I mean, that's, that's it, no doubt even.
There were no incentives.
There is no incentives.
Well, I understand that. I'm just talking about prior things that we had to deal with.
Yeah.
I understand that, and I know there's been a lot of changes because we've kind of insisted.
We had to.
That these changes be made. I understand that. We built a pretty solid portfolio to offer what incentives we had to offer in the county and, uh, you know, with all that, with education, race programs and stuff from the point. Uh, my only, I guess, concern is, when I worked, before I became self-employed, thirty years I worked in the coal mines, coal mine industry. I'd go in one day and they'd say, oh, you got thirty years of life, thirty years, and that's, I was excited. Next week, I'd go to work and say, well, we're gonna have to lay everybody off, you know? Uh, and I mean, it, it was just very unstable, but most people want to at least work twenty years, get a retirement. You know what I'm saying? I mean, to get their full-time in and as you, as you age, like I aged, uh, you know, it's harder to find that type of, any employment. When you get old, so what I'm looking out for, I guess, is the young person that wants to move here, work here in Russell County, that wants that tenure. They want to say, well, this is a great job. I make a good money. I got good incentives and I can stay here and work for twenty years in the top. You know, and what happens is a lot of these people go to work at these plants, ten years and they pull the plug and they leave. And as they've aged, it's harder for a person that's aged to find that new employment. And that's the only, only concern I have, is just to make sure that we're looking at everything, I guess.
Well, one, one of the things I seen today during, and during the Tate, and it was during their operations. It's what this, the board had put in before, and you've worked with the school board, was these laser cutting, you know, these laser classes that you did through the trade schools to be able to cut materials. And they were, actually, you've got a couple of work that's working that went through that program and is actually working for the Tate company. They do hire local, same way that's coming into the Polycap and the same ones that's coming in through the AT&amp;T will be local. And, you know, that was amazing to see that program that, remember that time we gave them, what was it, sixty-eight thousand dollars for high-level laser equipment to be able to cut down, they had to put out at the new building? Well, they got to see it in operation, you know, in a professional sense. That was, that was neat. Absolutely. Here. Well, that was a lot. That was some of the work. We just had this occurrence that was not just today, but it was, what, uh, it was on Monday. On one of the, um, companies that were here, there was, it was a, a guy that was looking for a housing. What you got to remember, Russell County has seven counties that touch our border, so they're, our workers are coming in and they're coming out. And what they told us, they said, we can't even find a place to rent. I, I mean, they actually called our office to see if they could find, is our household listing we don't know about? And, and they're showing up at the commissioner's office, seeing if anything's for sale. I mean, it, it was amazing. He said, we would live in Russell County if we could find a place in Russell County, or a decent place in Russell County. Because you've got to remember, these people that's coming in through Tate and these other three corporations are coming in here, their base salary is in the fifty to sixty thousand dollar range. So they're going to look for better housing.
It is.
Well, what I seen down there working today in Tate, uh, you, you're just, you ain't even started yet. Yeah, and he started.
It, yeah. It's kind of like a chicken and egg. You know, the, the developers won't build it until there's a demand, but there's no demand until the jobs are here. I mean.
Yeah.
And so, and the reason I totaled up those nine hundred jobs is I said, well, you know, let's assume we could get half of those people to Russell County. What would four hundred and fifty new residents be, county do for the county on the tax rolls and on the expenditures to businesses and things of that nature?
Well.
Yeah. Well, you know, Cumberland Plateau is, they are working on a housing study right now. And of course, Lou and I went to a composite, you know, house, uh, uh, composite, but modular home showing. And, uh, I was pretty much blown away with what they had, you know? There's a plant, this Fleetwood Company is building houses. They build, they're regular, they're built to stick, uh, stick-built house specifications, only they're built inside. And they're laid out in modular units, they have like two by six walls, you know, way around. They said that the average waste, you know, stick built sound was like, the materials was like thirty percent. They had theirs down to three percent. I said, I said, I bet you guys have done enough that you can just cut them out. He said, well, yeah, we can cut out every piece of, you know, and just, then it's just a matter of putting it all together. But they were right impressive homes. I'm telling you, they were, they were building duplexes, they were building, they could do multi-family housing. They had a twelve hundred square foot unit, and they said was about fifty-seven dollars a square foot to build, to pull it out. And they, about another forty percent they projected, to finish it up, do the water and sewer and all schmear. They had a two thousand, twenty, twenty-two, forty-seven square foot home that finished out for about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And that's down in the range where we have to be, I think, you know? We need to be in the one fifty, two hundred, somewhere in that range right there.
They already give that level housing, you know?
The thing about those, bang, you order one, you know, six weeks later, you can get it. It's a short turnaround. It's not like waiting, you know, six or eight months to get a stick-built house.
Well, while we was walking through, we actually had Wise County IDA and the Ask, and Wise County Administration with us when we walked, uh, Tate. They, they copied us because they were talking to us with the AT&amp;T, but the, the gas issue came back up, you know? Right now, you know, they're looking at, they got a hundred and fifty employees, getting ready on one seventy, and they can go to three hundred employees just that one alone if you get the gas into it. Because they got to hinder their operations because of the, of the level of gas. Now, they're running it the way they're running right now based off the lines, but they said when in May, and it looked like a city running down there today. Once they get in full operation and full capacity, it's, 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 need to see it. Three hundred employees. And you know, like the Siemens, that's got seventy-five coming with it, you know?
We had got to get that done.
Lou, uh, was that two point two additional?
Two point two million, yes.
On top of the one that they're willing to put in.
Gas company, yes.
The, uh, gas company was willing to put in, uh, a million.
Yes.
And then we were left with two point two deficit and a pump for.
We, we, we talked to Israel A. Quinn about hanging it on the bridge. You've got pipes on the bridge now.
Yeah, you do. He thinks it's possible. He thinks it's possible.
There's a water sewer in the bridge now.
Yes.
And, and you could even do a double containment, but you really wouldn't worry about the gas because it should rupture for some reason. It's going to go up.
But sitting here talking about what we got coming over the next twenty-four months, the current budget, get the teachers in line, you know? Where we may have to step into this, you know what I'm saying, over a two-year period phase, but it will come in alignment. You, you've got the infrastructure in place. You've got the stability, so if we work closely, watch our steps and move forward, then we can get to there, so.
The problem with housing is utilities, not so much the water. We're in pretty decent shape there, but it's sewer. You know, we're going to have to, we need sewer in Hansonville, we need sewer, you know, different places. We need, we need a water plant, a clinch over there somewhere. You got sewer. Yeah, well, yeah, you, you got to leg up. That's no joke.
It is, and you got a good Steve?
Yeah. Store it up a bunch of modulars.
But, board members, I really appreciate this and, and Lord knows that, uh, over the last probably two weeks, Steve and I haven't, we, you know, or David, we, we go home and we get back up, we go home and get back up, and so that's all we've done is look at this thing. But, I mean, we could say it and go through pencils and pens, that's not material. I mean, you, you ain't going to get to these numbers. You, you, I mean, I could cut every piece of pencil pen and operational administrative costs here. You'll never get to that one point, one, three, nine. Uh-uh, not possible. This is going to take strategic movement and planning over the, over the phases to get this in place and get it's, like Steve Breeden said, and, and David and Lou. Once you get it in place, you got to sustain it. This, this is not a one time, once we get it in place to move forward, you're going to have to sustain it. And you've got the infrastructure to sustain it that's coming in place, because we know the machine and tool, we know what the real estate is on these projects. We know what is projected. Well, what if I can get Pure Salmon and then what's projected? That's a hundred and eighteen million dollars worth of machine and tool.
Well, I still believe that.
But that's five years out.
Based on the casino money, they've not even got the casino complete.
No.
It's, when that gets in, if you're going to use it for public safety.
And education, and B-Dot ain't getting no money.
So, but I believe that that's a real critical way that we can take that source of income to fix our schools.
Yeah.
I did, I think we can use that money to help fix the education, fix the.
See, when we first started the casino and I sat on the casino board with the other county administrators, and we were actually projecting out a couple of hundred thousand, almost three hundred thousand worth of what we're getting. And they had a issue with, uh, the steel at one time. They got slowed down. Yeah, I think it was in the paper, you know, you know, due to pandemic, it was, it's kind of hit a little bump, but they're on schedule for August right now.
Oh, I heard they were going to finish this summer or something, finish the casino, but hotel, hotel won't be finished.
That is correct. That is correct. It's been reduced, not exits. It's been reduced. The hotels and what I call the, uh, the stage, what, it's not, it's a pavilion, you know, it's.
Amphitheater.
Amphitheater, thank you. I was looking for the right word. Uh, you're looking at next August. So everything should be in place by that time. Now, that's why it's paid for, but it's moved, as fast as they've said it's going to move, but, so, I mean, if anybody's watching the news, they actually exceeded last year's proj, I mean, last month's projection, so.
Well, I will tell you too, uh, I don't know how we do this with AEP. I mean, they're pretty, seems like they're running control. For the parent utility account.
Like the, like the railroad.
Just a little town in Homay, and a twenty-two thousand dollars parent utility account for a little municipality. I mean, and I don't know what St. Paul's. I mean, and I don't know what St. Paul's is. I mean, it's crazy.
How would you look at this?
I know, but I will tell you this, we had a, uh, Zoom meeting with the governor. Uh, and it was a little while back, but we had a Zoom meeting with the governor and I had two of the major gas companies there, to look at an opportunity to bring natural gas to every home in South Carolina. And that could drive the economy and it would be a competitor to AEP for, you know, another option. Then I found out that one company has a franchise, has complete control of the aspect of the natural gas. We're producing it, we're shipping it away from here, became used. I don't under-, I mean, I don't understand that. I think that's crazy, uh, that we can't utilize it when it's right in our back door. So, you know, I think that with the two large.
Legislative.
It's gotta be a legislative move.
Between the producers and distributors.
Well, the thing about it is, you know, with the two largest gas providers, manufacturers that we talked to that was in the meeting, they said they could go ahead and start hooking up people immediately. And if they had access to do that, they could go ahead.
For the authority.
We fought these battles, like with industrial development, it's like the price and the cost, putting it over there to particular industries. So I think there's gonna have to be some legislation. And I, we've talked to the legislators instead of kinda push them in that regard, try to open up the gates, floodgates. Because if you don't have natural gas, uh, or, or other types of resource, I mean, just to have it there is an opportunity. If you wanted to pick natural gas to eat your home or eat your water or whatever, you'd have that option. And I just, I, I just think it's, uh, it's sad that we're producing it and can't even get access to it. So I, I think that's something that our citizens, our, uh, anybody that can send a letter, the legislators to open that gate, help us.
Call you legislators.
Call you legislators.
Even, even if there were some option for municipalities to form their own little company and distribute it, uh, you know, at cost or whatever, I don't know, but a non, nonprofit.
We talked to them about that. I don't know how that kinda got locked in to one company had a franchise to have complete control of the natural gas aspect. Uh, and all these other companies are, I mean, most of the lines, like in Leavenon, here in Leavenon, there's a few areas that can get access to natural gas. And then there's a lot of areas that passes right by and they can't even get hooked up.
The only area that I know that they ran natural gas when it got down Main Street was over in the Purner Division. Because I live two blocks off Main Street, down that street, baby. Two blocks, and I beg them to bring it there. They said, well, maybe at the hospital there besides the tape.
It's almost like the BVU. It's almost like the BVU issue, eh? All that fiber goes through. But, again, take it, take the budget back, talk to the different departments, do whatever you need to do. We've got future meetings with school, actually, Mr. Hensley and myself have a meeting with the school board at nine o'clock. So we're looking at all these things as much as that we can. This is the first rough draft, so.
I'd be interested in knowing what additional cuts they made other than to school. If the recommendations are there.
Yeah. And hopefully we'll be able to see that, what comes down to that one point three nine.
Yeah.
Uh, I will tell Ms. Wallace too, uh, with the Cumberland Plateau Initiative for Housing, I made a recommendation that we could invite some realtors, uh, to talk to, see on the ground, burger ones on the ground, selling properties facing the home shortage issues. Seeing what the pre-, uh, the properties are actually selling for. I know in my district, there's been a lot of people moving here from outstate. About twenty-two acres, eight, mint price for it. So I was introduced to them, and they said they sold a three hundred fifty thousand dollar home, bought this property up here for a hundred thousand dollars. They're gonna live on the rest of it until they retire. And I thought, well, that's pretty amazing, you know, so if we just had, like Steve said, the infrastructure and, and things that you gotta have to develop the home sites and develop the properties on. And I know that, uh, we're, we're, the initiative where we brought forward here to sell properties, get back on the tax rolls, it's been pretty effective. And I think there's one coming up in. They tell us that Nick Sale's coming up, I think, right, May twentieth. That there'll be some more properties sold, those properties will come back on the tax roll. So I think that's a good, good initiative.
See, see, whatever you, you know, when they sit and look at these, what I call the king and queen of tax. King, queen of tax is, of course, real estate and personal property. Now, if we have these companies that are coming in and setting borderlines like Tate and, and, and Siemens and, and, you know, Sandwich, and they're coming in and out, those people are transcending in and out. They're paying real estate and personal property in these other counties. You ain't gonna make no more than what, what gas and food they buy while they're here on the passer. There's over forty-seven hundred that move out here and in out here on a daily basis, and that comes from Virginia Department of, uh, Employment where, where they're based. If we could get these in here, get that tax base, the king and queen of tax, that's the way you could increase. I mean, you can look at all these tax items, it's same thing as any other county. When you decide and you look at these, these major ones right here, this is the same in every county. When we sit and look at these major king, queen of taxes that's based off of this, and I'll get down there to it. And as you look through these, right there on the top part, excuse me, second. That, that top line of the, what is it, eight line, nine line items, that's, that's your king and queen of tax right there. I mean, if you ain't, if you're not moving in that, the rest of the numbers really ain't gonna matter because this is the local sales taxes. So if you ain't got people living here, you're not gonna collect sales tax either, so your sales tax is going down. It, everything lives and breathes off these line nine line items. Your schools, everything's based. Your work, your schools, your communities, your ballparks, everything is, is off of this. And let me put it in another perspective for you, okay? The school board, when they did it, and this, get the teachers up, which is well deserved, that's ten point one million dollars, okay? Those, these two columns between the both taxes, if you see the seventeen million and the twenty-four, that's twenty-one million. You're a fifty percent and just gone in one line, just immediately you got it. When you pay them, you've, that, you, you, your revenue base just dropped by fifty percent. So we've got those other fifty-four departments to take care of with fifty percent of the money.
Penny on the real estate amounts to about a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, sir. That's gross. No, yeah, gross.
Gross. Know what you're collecting.
Yeah. Of course, you sell collection rates.
So you generated a million dollars, you got it.
Ten cents on the hundred, that's.
So in order to be attractive to folks to live here, we're gonna have to clean up. I'm going there again, no, you don't wanna hear that. But there are grants out there, Steve and I learned that the other day, and I hammered on that one. Um, there's a gentleman in Smith County that's working for their planning district. And, um, he has discovered the, uh, ultimate way to layer grants. And I always thought I could do that, but he's really got me beat. And he is, um, he's pulled in money to take care of the dilapidated buildings. And there's money out there to take care of that.
Talking about Marion.
And then you replace that with these, these houses that Steve and I looked at, which are instant houses, and they look nice, they do.
They were nice.
They, they do look nice, and they're sheet rocked, and they're, they're hot, they, they put high-end things in there. You can get a lower grade, but they put high-end things, and so that's an instant home. And if you have, and one of the things they said, and Steve has already repeated that, is if you don't have, uh, if you wanna stick it out in the field somewhere, that's gonna cost you more, your pad or whatever. But, because you don't have water and sewer to that. But some of our communities are equipped with water and sewer, and they're just sitting there doing nothing for the county. And that's what we need to be working on, so that people will live in these more disparate homes, uh, places, I should say. And, and when we start making our communities rise together, we're all coming up at the same time. And it's, it's inviting for people to really.
So you were talking about the one in the housing project, St. Marion, is that one you were talking about?
Yes, they, they've got rentals, they've got, uh, you buy your home or you can rent a place, and they have different, you know, you have, not everything works for everyone, not, not big, big house people, little house people, middle-sized people, and renters, you've got all this. And he had, he had rolled it all into one big, I, I mean, he must not ever sleep, is what I've decided. It, it's just amazing.
But that Virginia housing helped him funds.
Yes, and, and this is not gonna be funded on the backs of the king and the queen of taxes. This is funded through, uh, opportunities that are out there, and if we don't go for those, somebody else is gonna go for them.
So, you know, I was actually in Smith County last week, last weekend, because that's where my last parents lived. But just get to the story, I, we came off at Marion, went through town, and, and they've got the signs up where they're turning dilapidated buildings down, actually out of the streets. I mean, they have like a row of them, I mean.
He bought twenty-one.
Yes, I mean, they had a whole street row of them, they, they were tearing down, had signs out, you know, constructions on them, I mean, it was, it was pretty amazing.
And they are replacing them.
As they, as one went down, one was new, sitting beside an old.
They had on most of them sold, didn't they say?
Yeah, okay, I know.
So they're rebuilding their community from within, and that's what we really need to be thinking about.
Okay.
I think Lou's right, you get that well-hanging fruit, where you've got access to utilities. I mean, that's kind of a no-brainer, going in and do that.
And see, we got land that, you know, that taxes not paid on, but we got, we got.
Then after you finish that, you're gonna start looking at areas just adjacent to you, to a town somewhere where you can pump, you know, pump at least sewer and waters, it's bad, you're pretty good there. Sewer, we've got to get it to an existing sewer.
And create a planned community that has proper streets that are not gonna be maintained by the property owners. In twenty years, they've got potholes, they're gonna be VDOT spec, and all these little properties are well-done in a planned community with possibly natural gas and water sewer.
And, and not just, you know, at the board's recognition, just, you know, as a, as a thought, walking these companies, you know, and talking to the, the managers and the employees. If you get those kind of numbers in here, and this is just, you know, some of them that we talked to were frustrated because they couldn't find a home or a house. They're gonna move, does that make sense? You're gonna be able to get them here, but the problem is, you're gonna have to work on is keep them here. There's where it comes. You're gonna have to keep them here. And they like, and that's infrastructure, water, sewer, amenities, where they can take their kids, ballparks, they want, they want these things that.
You're not gonna get them here.
If you don't, go over to Washington County and take a look at their parks, you, you, go by Food City, see, they're building spaces that can dump the concrete all the way. Look at there, and look what's around it. I mean, that's just one of the many. So, I mean, we have an opportunity to do that, everything is in place, but, you know, it's gonna take a little bit of work, a lot of work, and, and a little bit of time to get to that point. Money, takes money to make money.
Well, it's been a good conversation, but it didn't balance the budget.
Yes, sir.
You got me now. Uh, just for my memory's sake, I know you'd mentioned it to me before in the, in the public. Uh, the principal and interest on the IDA loan and PSA loan, that's not eternal. When's that gonna be paid off?
The, on the IDA loan?
Yeah, it's, uh.
Yeah, I know, I know what you're referring, that, that IDA loan is actually this government facility, that is paid off next year. Twenty twenty-five.
And the PSA, that'll be?
That PSA has got probably, it's, it's staggered between those old loans.
That's a culmination of a lot of smaller ones.
It's, it's a lot of small loans, it, it varies from ten to fifteen.
They mature at different days.
Yeah, it's a, it's a variance between ten to fifteen years.
Okay, we, getting closer. You said that was previous board, that's, that's why I was wanting to ask, you said it's previous boards.
They were financed for thirty years when they were financed.
Okay, so we, we've still got a while on that.
Yeah.
Next thing I had is, uh, myself and, uh, David Eaton met with, uh, our treasurer, Alicia McGlothlin. And, uh, she's been a great steward of our money. And, uh, got it in some interest-bearing accounts, and with the Fed rate being what it is, uh, she, she's getting some pretty good interest on her money.
Right.
Um, I know you got that line item on there.
Yes, we do.
It's hard to predict interest and what'll be happening, but based on what I've read, the Fed is probably not gonna reduce rates anytime soon. So we might get through half of this fiscal year on rates as they are today. Uh, that might be something, talk with her about and see what she projects the interest might increase to.
Okay. We, as everybody knows in our private accounts, if you got a savings account, as you can see here on revenue from use of funds and property. Now, this is at, in two thousand and, and twen-, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, we, we had made thirty thousand eight hundred and one dollars in our revenue. Now, so we, we got into the investment part, but that's making up a lot of compartments, you know, with restricted funds that we've got that we've put in investment, we're drawing interest on that, we have to pay different departments and health insurance. And we actually took, during that time, during the COVID, and the ARPA funds, we converted all that to lost revenue during that time. And we put it in interest-bearing accounts, and that's why it jumps up, we're, we're drawing interest on that now, which we can do. So we went from the thirty thousand up to the three fifty, but the problem is, once we pay for the renovations and the rest of these counts start to fall, you know, come back down in the Fed, you know, whether they one cut or two cuts this year, they, if they do, it will only be maybe a half a basis point, if that. Because it, it's, the inflation is not breaking here. I can tell you right now, anybody wants to go take a look at the gas bomb, it's, you know, it's running through, it goes up every time I go buy it. So, but when we, point is, is on that, some of it we can use and some of it we can't, depending upon restrictions and the law. So we felt comfortable, you know, moving within the last year's budget of three hundred fifty thousand on that, to be able to use that and feel comfortable, not only with restrictions on what we got between the different accounts, but also restrictions on cash flow. You guys can set a budget of a billion dollars, it won't mean a thing. If I can't get that money out of that cash, out of that king and queen of tax, that comes in off of taxes, which hasn't been raised in twenty-three years, I can't pay the bills. It won't matter what you have in that budget line item, it's a cash flow problem. We work on a cash basis.
Business always is cash.
It's cash flow, just like your home, you got it, you better not spend it. And if you, and if you look, and if you look at the debt load, back to Mr. Hensley, and that's a good point to bring up. That was a lot of water and sewer projects, and it, it sounds like a lot, but you take a look at the other counties. Right now, we talked to Wise County today. Their, listen to this number, y'all. Their school payment just on interest, a year, eight million dollars.
Interest?
Interest only. They took out a ninety million dollar loan, they consolidated, built schools. It didn't lock the interest rate in, eight million dollars. Let me go to Tassel County, if y'all haven't seen in the paper, three million dollar deficit. That's just, that's just the way it is. If it hadn't have been for this and Buchanan County and Dixon County on the coal severance, which is pulling in, you know, thirty-some million of those, they would have been in the same predicament. We are at the point of things that were created externally. Of the fifty-five, of what you've seen there, that wasn't my department or our departments or the constitutional officers. That's, that's the outside cost of inflation raises. But the schools, you know, they're gonna have to do it. You're competing with the rest, this is out there competing. If you pull up the Borshu County, of what they're starting salaries, fifty thousand dollars, walk in zero years. I mean, they're gonna go. You have, you went from thirty-six thousand to fifty, that's a fourteen thousand dollar pay raise. We're taking a fifteen, twenty-minute drive, they're gonna go. How many did, uh, did, uh, Ms. Hooker say? She lost fifty, fifty? Now, all that wasn't just, just going to other schools, some of them retiring and this and that, but, but you're still, the point is, you lost, that's fifty, that's, that's huge. but you're still, the point is, you lost, that's fifty, that's, that's huge. It's cause you still had deficit.
Love that, well, we've talked about a lot of stuff, thank you.
Yes, you do, how do we get it fixed? And, and if get it fixed within alignment of what you got scheduled out of the king and queen of taxes and machining tool that's coming in on these jobs. How can you make them balance out as we go forward, get that cash balance, like I said, if you set the budget to be a billion dollars, it won't matter. It's what you collect.
I had some questions, I mean, they're not, it's just more for me since I'm new, you know? Um, but on like our miscellaneous revenue, you know, there's some things on here that are, that have been zero, and I'm just kind of wondering on those, I had some notes made. Um, like, I don't know, let's see here, um, animal shelter, for instance, donations, do, what's, what's going on with that?
Okay.
And I know that's not gonna fix our bottom line or anything, I'm just, it's, it, I, it just stuck out.
Uh, you talking about the animal shelter miscellaneous?
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
Cause it was like seventeen thousand five fifty eight.
Right.
And then there's just a dash and a dash.
It is, now, when we budget legally by law,
Mm-hmm.
if, if it's not guaranteed, I can't put another in.
Gotcha.
Okay, I've got two or three donors that have, is a big dog advocate, some years they donate depending upon their economic status. They send it in, and they donate to pay in for our animals. Uh, they actually donate to be able to be neutered and in the well car and dog food. So, but any of these line items, like you see that.
Like non judicial.
Yeah, these miscellaneous revenues, I can't really depend upon it, you know, I can.
So you just put in there basically after the fact.
That's correct, if we anticipate, that's correct, it's after the fact.
I gotcha, um, yeah, I, I get that, I understand why that is now, I just, you know, flipping through and didn't, didn't see. And also, when we look at the solid waste landfill and transfer station stuff, um.
Are you looking at the expenditures or are you looking at the revenue?
Uh, expenditures.
Okay.
Um, so, when you're looking at, like, the vehicle repair and fuel supplies, that's from the, um, convenience sites to the transfer station, correct? A hundred and ninety five thousand, I think.
That's the revenue.
Oh, is that revenue?
Yeah, that's revenue, that's why we click at the transfer station, what you gotta remember is, what we do on our local operations, pick up trash, you actually generate a revenue off of that because at the transfer station, so we take that cost minus what we make, and there's your net.
Okay.
So, actually, you run, what, eleven, twelve stations, minus a hundred ninety five thousand dollars. Cause we operate the transfer station, that comes across in, and we were running the demographics on it, majority of it is, and Mr. Hensley was asking about that the other day too. And we were discussing it, a lot of people thought it was residential, no, it's, it's, it, uh, it's actually people like PDOT contractors, construction that's coming across that we charge to offset our cost of, of giving our, trash services or disposal services to our citizens.
Do you allow this construction to demolition?
We make it, we make good money off of PDOT. That'll kill my contract tomorrow. That's right, we did.
Now, do we try to operate with like, um, with a, a reserve or anything like that, is that?
Do we have a reserve?
Yeah, do we, do we currently have one?
We do not budget a reserve.
We don't budget a reserve?
No, we do not, ever, ever. Now, that does not mean the funds is not in the general fund, but we do not purposely budget a reserve. And the reason to do that is, it's not fair to put the taxpayers' money upon a reserve. If there's an issue or an emergency that occurs, I will become for the board, issue by issue, and ask for a motion and a movement on that appropriation.
I like that.
Well, I've got a couple of questions, um, just looking at the year over year. Um, some of these items, you know, were, were level funding or three percent raises, based on the state requirement from last year. But if you look back a year, two years, some of these things are pretty large increases, and I just, I'm curious as to why.
Uh, which ones are you looking at?
So, one, one in particular is sheriff's office, the civil and court security. In twenty one, we were at seven hundred and nine thousand. And now, we're at one million nineteen, that's a three hundred thousand dollar increase. That's pretty significant for years. And it's a four hundred thousand dollar increase on the bottom line for sheriff's civil and court security, uh, it is on page twenty one.
Okay, so, you're talking about from the nine forty two, eight seventy four, twenty twenty one up to one point.
Now, we're certain, uh, one point three five.
Three nine five six twelve, yes. Now, what you gotta remember too, now, a couple of things, and, you've got a larger courthouse, which is actually, you had to by law increase during the last year to get that up. So, that's set by the Virginia Supreme Court on the number of jail bailiffs that must be there, that's set by the judges.
Does this include the guys at the front door, the?
Includes the ones in the, with the judges, the front door, the security, the roamers, yes.
So, how many positions did we add to that, three hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, actually, that was different, so what you gotta remember, these guys are also certified law enforcement officers. So what happens is, during Governor Youngkin's movement, a lot of law enforcement got major increases.
Now, I'm guessing that's what the two hundred thousand.
That's correct, that is correct, so they, they kept in alignment with those increases this year.
So really, really, we're down to really about a hundred thousand.
Give or take, depending upon the type of health insurance.
Some of that was the governor's law enforcement increase.
Yes, and he's been very generous to law enforcement over the last three years.
And that was kind of along the same lines, if you go down to law enforcement line on page twenty four, a similar thing, you look at it, it's from, from, uh, one point seven on the subtotal personnel services to two point one. So, another four hundred thousand dollar increase over the last three years.
Yes.
Uh, but, if you look at it, it's only a hundred thousand from twenty one to twenty two versus, the other one was a two hundred thousand, I'm assuming we have way more employees in the sheriff's office under the law enforcement than we do under the court and civil. Uh, so that, you know, I get that, but to me, that number's just, it doesn't make much sense. I mean, I, and I'm not saying it's, it's wrong, I'm just saying why, you know what I mean?
Are you on the, are you referring to the law enforcement of the total first sheriff's department?
Yeah, your, your salary, weight.
I got two point nine one eight six thirty nine, under law enforcement.
Are you looking at the total?
Yes, for FY ending six thirty twenty five. Two million nine eighty one, six thirty nine, on page twenty two of sixty one.
This, twenty two is common to turn on my page.
It's down at the bottom, yeah, it says page twenty two of sixty.
Two nine eighty one?
Two, two million nine eighty one, six thirty nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's a five hundred, well, yeah, right at a five hundred thousand dollars, it's pretty strong, twenty one.
Law enforcement salaries have, when their base was at thirty four thousand, now, do you, now, a, a beginning triple zero, years of experience and certification is forty five thousand start. You gotta remember, that's paid by the state of Virginia, the constitutional office.
So then, I couldn't, doesn't come off of, I mean, that's also.
No, you, you can't touch, I can't touch the, cause, way it works is, we pay it, the const- the comp board for the state of Virginia, DHMR, the heart, Department of U resources through that, they reimburse us, it's a dollar for dollar. We bill it, we put it in their actual payroll system, and they reimburse us back, it's, it's just a pass through. Whatever he's got on payroll, we pay in payroll, we get reimbursed in payroll.
For sheriff's office?
Yes. Same way with clerk's office, the treasurer's office, the commissioner of revenues office, and, uh, is it clerk, am I missing?
Home whipper.
Home whipper or anything, yeah, or we, yeah, we look through the numbers. You look at all these, that's why I was saying on these shared services by the state that's in the revenue, you can't, you don't get included out. Our, our top twenty one million is what we get to play with unless we earn it fixed, or it's a grant, or donated.
Do we still do the dare program?
Yeah, we're required by law to do that.
Okay. Why in the world do you go from seventeen fifty to three eighty two, ten to three thousand? That's like a really weird anomaly, I mean, I know it's not much money, but that's just, that's on page twenty five, what I've got, this is a weird fluctuation. And we don't have anything online for litter control, I thought we did have a litter control officer.
We do now.
Is that not, uh, is that not budgeted under litter control?
No, I pay for that out of a grant.
Okay. I'm sorry to get into weeds on this, but I'm due this, so.
Oh, you do, any questions?
I'm just a little, little interested. I see we, we've increased, uh, rescue squad, fire EMS contributions, uh, for budget year, quite a bit, so that's, I mean, I know they need it, so it's a good thing. Um, is that a, is that a requirement, or is that just something we decided we needed to do?
No, that was part of the casino money, it's, it's actually considered public safety.
So that whole lot will increase?
Uh, right now, it's, it's at what it is for the fire and rescue. What additional money that, uh, is at the pleasure of the board was being considered for the teachers' races. Anybody have anything further?
While, while he's looking for that, are we gonna have any more of these budget workshops, or is it gonna coincide with our regular meetings? I know it'll be June before we finish the budget.
The, required by code of Virginia, you gotta approve the budget by June thirtieth, before the July. You gotta not only approve this one, but you also gotta close out the other, so we gotta balance the books by June thirtieth by code, and approve the new twenty four, twenty five by June thirtieth. Um, with this just being the introduction, yes, we're gonna have another project.
Yeah, I, I just, I just said that makes you public.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
The beginning and the end, it's just to be heard.
Now, with our further meetings, um, will we have the commissioner of revenue and the treasurer here as well?
I can do if the board requests, I can have any.
I, I think it would be pointless really to have a budget meeting without considering their role when they do that.
Uh, the treasurer was actually here.
Oh, I know she was, she had to leave, I totally get it, but I mean, for further, cause I realize this is the introductory.
This is the.
And, and we're just kind of giving our toe in, but I mean, for future, when we're really looking at things, I, I think it would be wise to hope.
And, and they, they usually, they sit in our meetings with the budget committee, and be able to, for you guys, the ones that's not on the budget committee, that, that way you have the opportunity to ask questions, they'd be glad to come. Um, that way, you can, you can see how this was developed. It, it goes through if any questions that they have, absolutely.
Thank you.
I will do, yes, ma'am.
Have the prayers started on the reassessment?
We have started on the reassessment, we have completed the flyover. Uh, we have actually started to move into reassessing then, but they have already started the comps, but, it, you know, they got till September the thirtieth to start that, and then, of course, you'll, you'll be picking an equalization board, three. So, be putting that on your to do list, you know, get three good candidates that's well qualified, uh, into the real estate, because with these increases, just what we're seeing from the counties like Smith County and, uh, Tassel County, with these increases, they better know property to be able to advocate, and we're defending whatever that assessment is.
And, and when you're talking about this, is this board members, is this citizens?
This is citizens you appoint as equalization board.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah. Very important positions.
Going back to what Peanut was talking about, uh, David, I should say, yes, I should call you by your actual name, but, um, about the idle property tax for these idle commercial buildings. Um, I like to see that in, in some form of action. Um, because it's not so much about the revenue from that, it's more about an incentive to get those buildings into hands that will utilize them for jobs.
Yes.
And, uh, I understand the, the other issues we have with, with housing, that's, that's a whole nother,
Yeah.
thing that's associated, but it's, you know, it's another thing, because we don't need, you know, Northrop Grumman taking up prime real estate, just sitting on a building for who knows how long, decades.
And in a lot of ways, the, you know, the market will clear itself, but you have jobs and that sort of thing, you know? And we may have to prove, you know, prod that along, but we've got to have the jobs here and that sort of thing, they'll give you buildings throughout, they're not, that's not important.
You know, you know, the county and the IDA, you know, and, and board members advocate and, and promote these buildings. And then, you know, like Alcoa, you know, it has, has the molders in it, and the kilns that's in it, and actually, with a major corporation like Alcoa, which is an international company, it is no longer on their balance sheet as an asset, as an operational, it's a storage facility, so they will set.
Yeah, they'll sit on it forever without.
Yeah, they'll sit there.
Yeah, and this would potentially prod them along to do better.
I'd be glad to pull all that information together with the commissioner of revenue.
Yeah, again, it's not about, it's not about creating a tax that's gonna create an enormous amount of revenue, it's about, creating something that moves that property into some company that will create a lot of revenue for us.
Absolutely.
And we want jobs, you know, an idle building doesn't create any jobs, so.
Absolutely.
Uh, it creates one, I guess, guy that sits up there in the hut guarding the front gate up there.
Everybody sees.
Afraid somebody's gonna dig it, big old machine out of six foot of concrete.
I don't know what they're gonna do, but.
They actually got another guy comes and shows building too.
Oh, okay, so do, do two people.
He's part time.
Part time, right?
Yeah, he's part time. But I'd be glad to put that, and I'll talk to the commissioner of revenue or start preparing it.
I think we need to see something, what it looks like for us to be able to move forward with something. And I know Ms. Lou had some questions about it, but if we don't start working toward it, we won't know what we're, what kind of questions to ask or look at, so.
Yeah.
I think we need to get moving on that.
Yes, sir. Any further questions? Anybody?
Well, I got a little issue here, we talked about trying to have all the rest of our meetings up here, because of the, it's comfort for, you know, our audience, we get a little jammed up down there. I think. Here we go.
Here we go. The fourth is our next board meeting, right?
It is scheduled for the fourth, sir.
But also scheduled here is.
The home acre. Yeah, yeah, you, and and see, they said start setting up. It's a big event. They, it looks like.
We go there.
We could, we could have it down here in prom.
We might feel younger if we had it down here.
So we can, if we wanna keep it on the fourth, we'll have to have it down here.
That is correct.
But if you want the big room up here, we'd have to move it to another day. Probably the sixth, which would be Monday, be the closest day. It's board's preference on that.
Yes, what's the board, that's up to you.
Isn't the first Monday of the month town meeting as well? Town eleven?
I believe so.
Okay, all right, just wanna make sure. We've got a history of scheduling over that same time zone. I've had several requests from people that wanna try to attend both and they can't when it's at the same time. So, that's my only concern.
What about Tuesday? Oh, you have, you have, that is right, you got the council.
What about that?
No, if it's not town, I'm fine with Friday, but it don't matter to me, whatever. Sixth.
It's the sixth.
Sixth.
May the sixth.
Can we have it up here then?
Yes, yeah, by then we'll be twenty-three.
Okay. Is that agreeable to everybody?
What is that?
The sixth.
It's a Monday.
Monday.
It's a Monday, I'd say that. Monday's sixth, a six?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, all right?
She got a motion, then he's second.
I'll I'll give you a second for discussion purposes and it doesn't really matter, but I scheduled my life on Saturday, so.
Well, we're just moving this one.
The sixth is not gonna work for me, so I won't be here. I'm representing my little community in Birmingham, Alabama at a Main Street meeting. What about the eleventh?
Yeah, what about that following Saturday? The eleventh.
That is right, because they have the twenty-seventh, the fourth and the eleventh.
Is eleven and booked this facility for the prom?
I I think so, I, yeah.
They book here?
They book here, yeah, we've got. It is, but you would not believe how well we do it.
Lonzo, you knew we were supposed to be having Saturday meetings.
Yes.
Why didn't you book us up?
He's been booked for a year.
So Saturday's now, I guess. I think he fears prom moms.
Yeah, we we don't wanna.
Anybody got any suggestions other than the sixth? Monday, the thirteenth?
The third or the thirteenth would be my suggestion. The third is on a Friday and the thirteenth is on a Monday.
I'd rather have it on the thirteenth.
Or the eleventh, whichever, I mean.
Thirteenth.
Thirteen? Lou, you're going on the thirteenth?
I I'm here, but don't plan around me. I just said I give you a second for discussion, so I just wanted to know.
We just, we just wanna make sure that I think.
See, if you get the other Saturday, the other prom.
My calendar looks good on the thirteenth.
Okay.
Is everybody good with thirteen? Somebody calling Ryan motion.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth it is.
I'll second the thirteenth.
Any further discussion? Six P M, correct?
Yes.
Thirteenth at six. All in favor of this motion signify, say aye. All opposed, lycet, drawn and. Okay. Now we can adjourn, all right? Unless anybody has anything else.
I'll second.
We did, don't we?
Got a motion and second to adjourn. All in favor signify, say aye. Opposed, lycet. I know there's none. Okay, be.
Well, good luck, Lonzo.
Yeah, that was like encouraging.